Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to what meeting is this? The fifth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Commissioners, I see we have some minutes for consideration.
Yes, Chair, motion to approve the minutes of the forty-first, forty-third, and forty-fourth meetings as previously circulated.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the forty-first and forty, forty-third and forty-fourth meetings. As previously circulated, I also vote I motion is carried, minutes are approved. Moving into the public hearings, calling agenda item number one, application number two-two dash two-three-five-seven-eight from the Shamrock Restaurant Group LLC, the Black Shamrock Tavern. Mr. Zibakala.
Co-Vice-Chair, members of the commission, Emmanuel Zibakala, I'm here on behalf of the Black Shamrock. To my right is John Napier, the owner. We received the supplemental report, I believe, actually yesterday via post. It wasn't over digitally just before the weekend. I would like to request a week of continuance of the public comment period left open so we could review and respond if possible.
That's right. Do you need to put anything on the record before we move on?
Uh, no, you just need to take action on the request to continue publicly kept open.
And this is because of, there's some issues with the affidavit of meaning, is that correct? Okay, and one week is enough.
Yes.
All right, can I get?
My motion will be to, um, for our application number two-two dash two-three-five-seven-eight to continue for one week, keeping the public hearing open.
It's been moved and seconded to continue agenda item number one for one week with the public hearing kept open. I also vote I motion is carried. We'll see you folks next week.
Thank you.
Item number two, application number two-two dash two-three-eight-four-one from Blade and Timber LLC. Mr. Nakoba.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair. Representative Nakoba, representing Blade and Timber LLC. To my right is Mr. Matthew Basinger, B-A-Y-S-I-N-G-R. He is the CEO for Blade and Timber LLC, and seated to my left is Kevin Rodewold, R-O-D-W-A-L-T. He is the GM for Blade and Timber LLC.
Okay, Mr. Wright.
Thank you, Madam Co-Vice-Chair and Commissioners. This application has received eight written protests, one hundred and seven signatures or letters of support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
No questions, but I do appreciate that some of those based on my questioning and requests at the preliminary hearing. I'll let you guys know that I'm still not inclined to approve the license, but we have a commission of more than three of us. It might make sense that we reconvene when the fourth is present, but we can discuss that later at some point.
Yeah, I did have a couple of questions for you folks. So, um, you did read all of the protests, correct? Is there any comments in response to any of them?
Actually, we did, for the ones that were emailed, we actually did respond to them. Mr. Basinger actually sent an email to them. We received no response back from them, but then what happened was we were given an email from the investigator telling us that we were violating a statute by trying to under the influence plaintiffs, which we weren't trying to do. Mr. Basinger was basically saying, we understand that when we got the information, because, you know, it's pretty bare bones what you get in that letter. It just says, hey, they're gonna get, they're trying for liquor license. And so we saw the concerns that came up and they, frankly, we've seen these before. So he knew how to respond to them, but then they told us we can't respond because it was us trying to tamper or trying to get them to change their opinion. And the thing that we wanted to make clear is that that was in no way, shape, or form what we were trying to do. We were merely trying to give them the information so that they understood clearly what Blade and Timber was, how they operated, and more importantly, that we were taking their concerns into consideration and actually putting them into our operating procedures. Commissioner Mioschiro, I think hopefully you'll find that some of the changes that we did make in, in response to the concerns that you brought up, that actually all of you brought up, and that we got in the in the protest, we tried to make sure that we addressed them as much as possible.
If I can comment whether or not there was a violation of statute, I think we can find that you folks acting to the effect, trying to resolve the issue. So thanks for that.
Certainly. I guess the things, the other questions that I had first was, so based off the current waiver that you have in place, right, that everybody has to sign. Technically, if anything happens to anybody, no one's liable. You folks are not liable at all, correct, based off the waiver?
We have a language that we use was suggested by our legal team. We've been using it for since 2017. Fortunately, we have not had to run into any issues where whether or not one was liable has been because we've not had any safety issues in five years of operation in six stores. That said, in the documentation that I've provided as well, there are thirty other examples of similar liability waivers that folks are using here in Hawaii in Honolulu specifically. Similar legal language. And I think what's important to note, I guess, is, you know, if it's not uncommon for businesses like ours or businesses that have any sort of sport to have labels in the waiver to make sure customers know, you know, what the actual activity is.
Follow-up, Mr. Basinger, on the current operations, you have a similar, if not identical, waiver language that you require your customers to sign up on before they participate?
Yes, we do.
And in your other states that you have businesses, and I just, I just don't know if this is a possibility, but have you ever been asked and have you looked into indemnifying the governing board or agency that issues the license to indemnify them or add them as an additional insured on your insurance policies?
We've not been asked to, but we wouldn't be opposed to.
And I don't know if that's a creative solution to help appease some of my concerns, but not all.
Understood.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would need to obviously check with our attorney, and I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know the your wants is ins and outs, but speaking hypothetically, if that was a request of the commission, I don't see any reason why I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Thank you.
The last question I have is, so I'm not asking specific numbers, but, you know, you've talked about other locations in the mainland that had liquor, that have liquor licenses currently, and prior to that, they did not have a liquor license. How much increase in business have you basically seen just by receiving a liquor license?
About twenty percent. And it would be okay if I added a little bit of context, you know, just over a year ago, we moved from the Queen Street to this location with the hopes and goals of being able to serve alcohol. We moved into a significantly more expensive place, knowing that this, we're hoping that this would be an opportunity. As it's all businesses, it's important for us, obviously. But looking at other states, the most recent being the state of Washington, where we worked with the state over the course of a year, a pilot program as a partnership. We saw about a twenty percent increase in sales. That was very helpful for our business.
Sideways, Mr. Basinger, what's the status of your restaurant, the bill dog so far and permitting?
Yeah, we got some information back. We're working with Palacana, Palacana permit, pass permit. We have at least one review from the health inspector. I believe they've asked us to move one fire pole about eight inches so that it's more reachable for folks who are EDA. Those, my understanding is those are the things that are needed for us to receive power.
Okay, do you have any indication of the timing of a final approval?
We're hoping within the month. And I guess again, to add to that, our anticipation is that we would not be certain, our goal would be to turn on both food and beverage sales at the same time. That's been our goal all along. We moved into this space with fairly little notice, and so we knew that we wouldn't have both the food permit or the liquor permit immediately. But from the standpoint of operations, it does make the most sense, we believe, to turn those both on at the same time.
Yeah, thank you. Chair, I think you need to.
Um, I wanted to ask one quick question before we go into that. If, are you, I see that you folks are applying for the restaurant general license. And I know that you stated in the, in a previous hearing that you folks would allow axe throwing for children as young as ten. Is that still going to be your policy? I mean, I have a two-year-old. And they are extremely difficult to control, even in the best of circumstances. And, you know, I also have two four-year-old nephews who just climb on everything and get into everything all the time. And, you know, I, my, my, I, my fear is that they are in these areas and nobody is really paying attention, and they get hurt. You know, I understand you guys are applying for a restaurant license, but this is something more than a normal family restaurant.
Of course.
And I think we can all agree that there is a little bit more heightened risk involved than at a regular restaurant where there isn't axe throwing present. So would you folks be amenable to not allowing, you know, children under thirteen in the axe throwing area at all?
Absolutely. If I could draw your attention to the documentation that we provided on page two, I think it's important just to make sure that I note the changes or the additions to kind of our rules and regulations that we're proposing for operations in the state of Hawaii.
I have a lot of documents here, so it's been two of which document are we talking about?
The letter that is at the very beginning.
So if you're getting the index, it's page three of the sixty-nine pages that we provided.
Okay.
And so I won't go through the whole thing, but certainly it will draw your attention. We really appreciated the feedback in our initial meeting. In that time as well, the state of Washington has gone forward with their public information. And so in response to our initial conversation, what we proposed is that we would install modular safety netting between the guests participating in axe throwing and the guests who are seated directly behind the participants. That was an ask from one of the commissioners. Similar to our policy adaptation with the state of Washington, we're proposing to drop our house policy from three beverages per guest during their axe throwing experience to two beverages per guest during their axe throwing experiences, excuse me. Right now, if you look at our documentation, most of it does say three, but of course, we would amend this to say two. All of our staff will be twenty-one or older. All of our staff will be trained by an outside consultant program or class on safe serve protocols and safety testing. Our age of participation will change from ten years of age to fourteen years of age. So we would raise that up. We would update our policy and registration to ensure that patrons have not consumed any alcohol before entry. That one is particularly important for us because what we're finding now, and what we found in Seattle, is because we weren't serving, we would have folks who felt like they were compelled to want to consume beverages beforehand, and we didn't have any control over that. We will continue to not allow outside axes or knives. There was some discussion of that in one of the folks who wrote in, talking about knives, and that's not something we desire. So we would put that, you know, right here in our documentation. And then lastly, this was just an update, but we've made significant steps to obtain the appropriate certification certificate of occupancy for food and beverage service. Do you think HCVA approval of our site seating plan, and upon being permitted to serve food, we would have a full restaurant venue? So that, most of that was in direct response to the feedback provided directly by the commissioners or by the folks who did write in, having any concerns from the general public.
Which is an awesome, Mr. Commissioner. We would be happy to do a six-month trial period and come back to you again to study if that will help ease your agreement with us participating in this. And once again, we won't start until we have the liquor and the food ready to go at the same time. But we're happy to do, you know, like a six-month trial period and then come back and bring you a report.
And I apologize for skipping over that sentence in the manner that I provided, but I think we actually, we'd be willing to do a full one-year trial period. This is exactly what we did with the state of Washington as well, because we were the first axe throwing venue in the state. We did a one-year trial period with them where we had a high level of reporting of our data, our findings of our alcohol sales. And again, that was a successful program. So I think leaning off of what we've already done on the state of Washington, it would make sense to do something similar here in the state of Hawaii.
I'm sorry if I've asked this question before. In regards to your staffing, are instructors, the throwing instructors, are they dedicated only to doing that, or are they going to be tasked with other tasks within the restaurant as well?
Yeah, so our throwing instructors, they do have a one-to-one throwing instructor for up to twelve customers. They're overseeing two lanes of axe throwing. Each lane has six customers. Because we have such strict limitations on who can have beverages, we also don't allow folks to order beverages for other people. You have to order your own beverage. And so there is the occasional time where they might walk fifteen feet from the lane over to the bar to grab the beverage and bring it back. But that's in line with our safety protocols to make sure that each person is drinking all of the beverages.
Right, um, if we have any protests, if we have any testifiers that would like to testify, we can. Anyone here?
And at the conclusion of the public testimony, there's something I'm gonna put on the record with respect to contact with protests.
Of course, of course. Thank you, Ms. Wright. Yes, hello, sir. Please introduce yourself and then Ms. Wright will swear you in.
Okay, Dave Cunningham.
You swear that the testimony you give today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Three minutes, sir.
I submitted some written support testimony. Do you guys look at that?
Yes, we have it here, and you don't need to, if you'd like to summarize or just.
Yeah, I'm not gonna go over each line item, but just listening to some of the questions you guys had, I think it's kind of interesting. I've been a member, you know, not a member, but a participant in Blade and Timber for over two and a half years. And during that time, I've witnessed the staff, and they're actually pretty dedicated. I was in bar management back in the eighties on the mainland, and if I was running this bar, you know, these employees have a really good job. You know, they're really on it pretty much, and they're not serving alcohol. They're even checking people's bags for, make sure they're not bringing in alcohol. The environment that you're talking about, you should have young kids, I've witnessed young kids throwing the axes. It's funny, when they come to the door, they get a sense of respect because the axes are being thrown. So it's almost like it's a good teaching moment, you know, for the parents to show, hey, this is something to be respectful of. You know, this is fun, but it can be dangerous, but it's really not dangerous. There's this way more safety. I don't know if you guys have visited.
I have.
The facility, it's, it's really safe, and the staff are really on it. You know, most people, again, even adults, there's a sense of respect for like handling axes. It's kind of scary the first time. And they tend to settle down, you know, there's no force play or something. And I've witnessed the staff, you know, intervene or stop if there is any, any, any issues. So it's just interesting, part of what my letter says, you know, the concern, I haven't seen what the concern letters are, but just by the gist of things, listen to the mission. If, you know, they're worried about safety overall, safety. I'd say it's safer not to write in a bar, because I've seen way more violence than a regular bar and things being thrown other than axes where it's really safe. And you have a lane, you have, you know, you have steel barriers as opposed to sitting in a bar and some drunk gets crazy and starts tossing glasses. A bar stool is around, so, so I think you gotta look at it in light of that. This, this company, you know, has been in business a while, and they obviously professionally and successfully run these other outlets. So I think it would be kind of unusual then not to be able to serve alcohol. And just so you know, I'm a one beer guy. I don't go to drink, you know. Yeah, and it's not the issue of being able to drink, but I think it's the freedom of being able to make a choice when you go into any, any venue where there's a sport and there's alcohol served. An example is the driving range at some of the golf courses. I've seen people throw their, their clubs down the course, you know, so they get mad and frustrated, so, and nobody's stopping them. That wouldn't happen here, obviously. Like I said, I've witnessed it. I've personally been there at least three times a week on the regular. So I just wanted to come and support them, and I think, you know, they're running a business. The new location is great, and from a small perspective, business perspective, I could imagine that, you know, the cost involved by not being able to serve an alcohol, it's detrimental to the business. We should consider that. Thank you for your time.
I have a question for you, Mr. Cunningham. You're in the unique position that you've been in the bar business and you're a patron of this activity. Drinks, people are affected differently, right? I mean, some people may get a little tipsy, some people look sober.
Yeah.
Do you have any opinion on the former, somebody who's a little tipsy, and that person throwing axes in this venue? Whether they're, whether they might, that might impact or impair their coordination, their skills, their judgment in any respect?
The skills and coordination pre-alcohol are not that good anyway. So alcohol's not really gonna have much of an effect and changes, because it's a skill. This is, it's a learned skill. It's not something you just have to pick up and do right away. So the alcohol, you know, you have a licensed bartender working the bar, and you have licensed employees on the, operating on the license. They should be able to spot anybody that's not, not normal, right? And two drinks, I guess, on the street, and I've got to dial it back to two. There's very few people, I think, after two drinks that are gonna show, you know, inebriation. For me, where being a bartender, I would say, oh, you know, shut you off, I'm sorry. You know, and again, this is my bartending days and bar management back in the eighties. And I think you're in that time, and this is on the East Coast, I probably only had to call four or five people and shut them off. You know, this is a drinking establishment. This is not a sports venue where you're half the time or most of the time is involved doing something else. They're sitting there, you know, downing drinks, and you shut them off. So again, from my personal experience witnessing the training and the safety consciousness of this company, I would, I would not hesitate, you know, to be in there throwing axes myself with someone who's, you know, had two or three drinks.
Thank you very much, and thank you for coming on.
We appreciate your time.
Commissioner, am I, am I allowed to respond to that question?
I have a follow-up question after we have any other testimony.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Have anyone else here to testify in present? So we'll note all of the letters in support and in protest for the record. Um, sorry?
I do have a follow-up question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Basinger, what kind of security do you have at this currently, and what's the plan after alcohol is served, if we're inclined to grant a license?
There is a security company that is hired and used by our entire shopping center. So our staff has access to call that number and to the lives that security company. There's some pieces that we have. Other than that, historically, at all of our other locations, we have our staff go through training. If you would, you know, not to go through the documentation, but we go through the escalation training, all of our staff members. We go out in that little house, but we feel really good about, you know, our ratio being at a maximum one to twelve. And then more specifically, our average group size is four point five, and so realistically, our staff members are never overseeing more than nine or ten patrons at a time. And that's not counting both management as well as bartenders or front desk. So the reality is that we're closer to probably a one-to-eight or a one-to-nine ratio at most. So having said that, we have not run into security issues. So using our common area and security company that we have at, at our facility that oversees, you know, a handful of other companies as well. We feel very comfortable with that setup.
Okay, thank you.
Would it be okay if I, just for ten seconds, try to get on to the question that you asked earlier?
Twelve seconds.
Twelve seconds, it's fine. You know, what's important to note is it's a maximum of two beverages. But if a customer is showing any signs of inebriation before that, even before any beverages, we would not allow them to drink any alcohol. And that's happened in our locations previously as well, where we don't even allow folks to have their first beverage, because we can see that they've already had some before.
Thank you.
All right, sorry.
Oh, thank you. I just want to put on the, the record, and I'm sorry to have to read something into the record, but HRS two-eight-one fifty-nine B provides that in pertinent part, the liquor commission shall make available to the applicant and any protester for review before the public hearing, the protest list of those persons who filed a protest or objection to the application, provided that the applicant shall not use the protest list to attempt to influence in any way, any protester to withdraw the protest or objection. So contact with a protester is not absolutely prohibited, but care has to be taken in terms of that communication. I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. That's understood, correct?
Yes.
All right, um.
Well, I'd like to convene into executive session, so I'll make a motion to consult with the board's attorney on questions and issues on a matter pertaining to the board's powers, duties, privileges, amenities, and liabilities.
Second.
So moved and seconded to convene into executive session. I also vote I, we are now in executive session. For giving us this time. We're now back on the record. We're on agenda item number two.
Mr. Nakoba, I will say, again, thank you for preparing. Thank you. You guys did a great job providing us information requested. Because we're, there's like three of us, I'm afraid we may be at impasse in terms of our decision-making, and it may make sense that we wait till we're fully constituted with four commissioners. Otherwise, I think it's not gonna be a good outcome. I believe based on scheduling, August twenty-fifth is the next time the four of us are here. If you would be inclined to request continuous today, and I think that makes sense.
Certainly. Okay, yes. We would be amenable to having our the twenty-fifth.
Okay. And is it okay if we keep the public hearing open? So we'll continue agenda item two, the August twenty-fifth, with the public hearing kept open so that we can have the opinion of our fourth commissioner.
So moved.
All right, been moved and seconded. I also vote I, and the matter is continued. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks very much for coming.
Moving into the special license applications, calling agenda item number three, application number two-three dash zero-zero-zero-eight-nine dash one two-three dash zero-zero-zero-eight-nine dash zero-two, and two-three dash zero-zero-zero-eight-nine dash zero-three from the Kids Fit Foundation. Mr. Murphy and Mr. McGuire.
Hello.
They're requesting a special nonprofit beer license, correct? Why don't you walk us through your event?
Um, so it's a athletic event called Spartan Race. So it's an athletic race, and what we do is throughout the day, we send heats of racers out, and they're either gonna do a five K, a ten K, a fifteen K, or a fifty K race. Some races could take as short as one hour, some races could take as long as six hours. At the race, we do have a festival area where people can come before the race and, you know, set it up, they put their wristbands on, and they stretch and stuff like that before we send them out. They do the race, and after the race, we have a finish line, and in addition to the finish line, we have a small festival area where we have food available, water available, and we're also looking to do a beer service at this after festival area. We have been doing this event for, I think, the last six years at the same location, and so far, so good.
If you have any questions or type of questions for the applicant.
I do have a couple of questions. When you folks are gonna be having people come into the location for area, are, are you folks gonna determine their age, and what are you gonna be doing for that type of situation?
Um, so we hired a, a third-party security company where we'll have two security guards at the entrance and two security guards that are ID checkers that are specifically tasked to check people's ID. And what we do is we, we set up interlocking metal bicycle fencing that they have to walk through in order to get to the point of sale where the beer is served, and they have to literally walk past the two ID checkers to get into that queue where they go get the beer served. So they literally have to walk past the two security ID checkers and show their ID for them to even get to where the bar, the point of service is. And we're not serving alcohol.
Correct? Is this?
Yes. Yes.
Cool, Lawrence, correct.
McGuire, you mentioned that you've done this event about for the past six years?
Uh, yes.
And the commission has provided or granted. And the commission has provided or granted license applications for the events in the past?
Yes.
The past, have you folks offered a free beer in exchange for a ticket to the event that, when the ticket purchased?
At some events throughout the country in the mainland, we do offer that. But I know that for this event specifically, we, we requested that it was taken down off the, off the event website. So it's not going to be offered.
What is the current plan? Are you going to provide a free beer with the purchase of a ticket?
Uh, when the, when the person purchased the ticket, what they do, what they, anyone that's over 21 receives a wristband. And then even though they have the wristband, they'll still be checked for ID when they come to the actual point of sale to get the drink.
The question I have is for anyone who purchases a ticket, are they going to be provided a free beer?
Uh, yes, we give them a free, either a free beer or a free non-alcoholic beer as part of the whole event.
Has that been done in the past?
Uh, yes.
Here in Hawaii?
Yes.
We have a rule that prohibits that.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, with that being said and known, we would have to definitely pull that and not do that. And I'd have to just, you know, reach out to the higher-ups and make sure that we're not going to be planning to do that. And then I will personally be on site to make sure that we don't do that if that's a rule in Hawaii.
100%. This was approved previously by this commission. I'm not sure. I cannot explain if it was due to oversight or not fully understanding the nature of the event. But I do appreciate you changing your plan to not provide a free beer in exchange for a purchase ticket, so.
So we, we, you know, we do this, um, you know, in, in, in multiple states and every state has different rules. And if you're telling me that's the ruling, then it's black and white. What we're allowed to do and not allowed to do.
Could I also put something on the record, co-vice chair? With respect to how this surfaced, we did receive a complaint that was lodged. I believe it was yesterday or today, which is why the investigative report was only uploaded earlier today. With respect to the allegation that a purchase of a ticket did provide the purchaser with a, a free alcoholic beverage. So the result of that investigation, from looking at the website, or has been uploaded to the board packet with respect to specifically the use of alcohol as a prize for winning a race, which is also prohibited by law.
So, um, just in relation to that, um, I just want to, um, to just double-check. Well, I'm still looking down at it right now. And just to, um.
My first event is August 19th. There are two hearing dates between now and the first date. The commission wants to give that applicant time to, I guess, check its website information.
Um, so, yeah, I was just checking now and I know that we put in a request.
Website right now. Pretty sure it's been taken off the website.
Why don't we do this, Mr. McGuire? Would you be amenable to continuing this for one week? And so that we can confirm even on our side that that information is not on the website? And also provide us with something in writing that states that you will not provide free beer in exchange for a purchase ticket?
One, 100, 100%, um, I will get with like our, I guess, marketing team, excuse me for not using the right phrase, and make sure that it's expressed to everyone that there will be no free drink with the race and that alcohol will be available for purchase. Not alcohol, but beer will be available for purchase if that person wants to, but it will not be free with the race.
Used as a prize.
Correct. Is it okay if we, we give away, instead of that, just to make customers happy? If we give away like a free water or a free like sports drink, non-alcoholic?
As long as it's not alcohol, that's fine.
What about a non-alcoholic beer? Is that available? Is that a?
Not within our jurisdiction.
Okay.
And also just to be clear, the beer is, wasn't a prize to win. It was just like included in the purchase price. So if you purchased a ticket, it was just like. If you win the race.
And it's all about intent.
That makes sense.
Pretty clear that they don't want to use free alcohol as an incentive for anything.
Got it. So.
So is one week enough time for you guys to?
So next.
Checking on that and change the policy.
So I think we could definitely change it. We could change it like ASAP before that. Just personally myself, I am flying to Hawaii to start the event next Thursday. And Peter is flying to Seattle for another event that we are putting on. With that being said, I'm sure we could figure out a time that we could communicate with the office via email, in writing, and to show what we're putting out and to show our intent of not doing a free beverage. With, with that said, I think we just need to look at the times when Peter lands in Seattle or I land in Hawaii just to make sure we could be in front of you. But, um, you know, no matter, no matter what, I will communicate via, you know, email with all the different, you know, proof or documents that, that I could even gather together, which I definitely could gather something solid for you.
Folks can also come back on August 11th, two weeks from now.
There's two scheduled hearings in between now and your event.
11th of the 18th.
Okay, I will personally be there on the 18th. But if, um, if Peter and I could just look at the flights, the different time schedules and just see if one of us are available for the 11th, you know, I'd rather get it done sooner than later and show you guys what we put out there. And then if not, then there's always the 18th, but you know, just being me, I'm a little nervous at all times. I just want to make sure we get to everything and dot arise and cross our Ts. So can we shoot for the 11th and just give us?
Check the flight right now.
Look at the flights.
We can certainly agenda for the 11th. If no one can make an appearance, we, we would just bump it to the 18th.
Okay.
Okay. And then prior to that, we'll be in contact. Who's the main?
We'll, we'll continue agenda item, uh, three applications, two, three dash zero, 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 eight, nine, dash, zero, one through zero, three, um, for one week.
So move to, sorry, two weeks.
Two weeks.
11th.
11th is next week. All right, so we'll continue for one week. If you folks aren't able to make it, we'll bump it to the 18th, okay?
Okay, just being that we, we're here talking right now, um, does everything else with the application seem okay? Or is there anything else we should look at and address? Cause we're here to like make sure everything runs smooth and we've been doing this for 12 years around.
We were just concerned with that, that, that complaint that we received and wanted to make sure that you folks were aware of that rule and making sure that we weren't approving you folks to do something that was contrary to our rules or laws.
Understood. I hear you loud and clear. And like I said, I'll personally be there and I'll put it up the chain and down the chain. So everybody understands what.
So try, try to, try to be, um, be here for next week's, we'll schedule it for next week. If you're not able to come, we'll continue it to the following week, okay?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
But it's matter, yes, please.
Okay, all right. Uh, can I get a motion, please?
My motion would be for application numbers two, three dash zero, 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 eight, nine, dash, zero, one, two, three dash zero, 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 eight, nine, dash, zero, two, and two, three, dash, zero, 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 eight, nine, zero, three, to continue it for one.
Then seconded to continue the matter, I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Agenda item three will be continued for one week. Thank you, Mr. McGuire. Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to agenda item number four, this is still special license applications. Application number two, three dash zero, zero, two, one, four, from University of Hawaii Alumni Association. Gentlemen, why don't you introduce yourselves?
My name is Justin Yushino, J U S T I N I O S H I N O.
My name is Kyle Mitsumori, K Y L E M I T S U M O R I.
My name is Thomas Fager, T E J O M A S O R A Z I E R.
So for, um, events running from August through November, correct? Fundraising events for the Alumni Association?
Yes.
Do you let, uh, give us some details about your event?
Basically, uh, have seven home games for the University of Hawaii. We're going to be having a fundraiser before and during the football game. As you know, that the stadium is closed and there's no tailgating allowed in the UH because the parking is in the structure. So the university, man, the schools had asked my company if I could come up with the event to raise people and have a fun and a safe place for them to enjoy before the game, so they can go have something to eat, get a drink, head into the game. Uh, we were fortunate enough also that because the stadium only has 11,000 people, we, we actually averages about 20,000 for the season ticket holders. So we thought it'd be a great place for the second round of people to come. Spectrum is going to give us the chance to broadcast the game live. So we're putting up LED screens and TVs throughout the parking lot so people can stay and watch the game. It is a family-related event also because we will also have food tents and interactive tents and crafts along with food vendors. Proceeds go to the University of Hawaii Alumni Association, which is through the foundation. It's earmarked for the athletic department. So we've got a big following and a lot of support from the athletic department. And then also part of the proceeds, because Camellia School gave us a chance to utilize the parking lot. We're also going to make a donation, sizable donation to the foundation charities as well. So those are two major beneficiaries.
So this is like an event in lieu of like a combo pep rally, tailgate kind of thing?
Yeah, we're kicking off. We got the license for the 20th, which is the pep rally. That's a much smaller event, but this is our full-scale event that we're going to have picking up the entire.
Yeah, because everybody misses the tailgating. They're just going to have some barbecue. I miss it. Oh, yeah, okay.
So we actually created in one of the spots an actual tailgate experience. So we were putting up a 10 by 10 tent, putting out a six-foot table, chairs, and then then we're going to also allow them to order drinks in their area and then cheer the food, all of our food trucks. So they can come and stay and have a tailgating experience without, you know, having to send anything out. And then in the middle section, when you see the University Avenue Bar Street building, that's the YY collection. They have air conditioner in there. So we're working with Nakoa and Koanui Nui for their members to come. And that's a VIP area for them to come in. And then they're, they go and leave the game, then we'll, we'll open that up to the general public as a VIP area. It's all contained. So the whole area that we have a serving alcohol is contained with barricades, exits and entrances and security in the whole area. Our actual whole area is going to have a perimeter of fence, about three feet high around the whole area. And we're going to wristband everyone so we know who belongs there, who's 21, who has access in and out of any of the places that we're serving.
And I'm assuming, um, the parking is going to be at the structure, right? So they're going to.
Yeah, so people are going to come and then we're going to provide a shuttle from the Stand Sheriff Center to our area. We're also trying to secure, we secured the two parking lots in the church that's next to us. And then the one in Baratania College, working on that. And then we're also in negotiation for Japanese students.
And they're on the other side.
We're providing, we're providing a shuttle.
Okay, okay. And, um.
Yes. So there's a, the one that's right across the street where Moose's used to be, and I think it's the daycare center. So we're, we're allowed to use that parking lot as well.
Okay.
Are you folks at the school having any sort of traffic control? It sounds like it's going to be very congested. Yeah, so we contacted HPD. I talked to Assistant Chief Anick and he's aware of what we're trying to do. So he said he's going to increase presence in the area. There also, what's going to be great about it too is that they're going to try and clear out some of the, the people that are maybe just clearing that out and the city's going to actually clean up that walkway that goes behind the overpass into the back gate. So that's one positive thing I think that's going to come out.
Being behind by Colorado.
Yes.
Right, because a lot of people are going to be walking to there through the backside.
So we're, we're actually, I've been working with Assistant Chief Anick on this and we let him know what we were doing. He's going to increase presence. And then we're also hiring HPD staff onboard. And then I was afraid you was also our director of security, so.
Events are going to end around 10:00 PM?
10 o'clock, yeah. Last call's at 9:30 and then we shut it down at 10:00.
Comment or request that there's neighborhood really close by. You have single-family structures on one side, you have apartment buildings on the other. So what can you do to temper the noise or potential noise?
We'll turn off the music at 9:30. I think most of the games, if the kickoff is at 6 o'clock, I think three and a half hours is a long time for a football game. So, you know, we kind of end it when the game ends.
You have the August 20 event as a dry run on.
And then we have the, the whole bar barricade. So it'll be a.
I guess my similar questions with your last event or the last one we did, right? We went through. So you kind of talked about they can sit down in there, order, you're going to have food in there. Are they going to be able to go in and out to get food, in and out of the beer garden?
They can go out and get food, but they can't take their drinks with them.
Okay.
They have to consume the alcohol within the barricaded areas as it's designated and no, no one under 21.
And then I know the total number, I think in your report was between 3 to 6, 3 to 5,000.
Yeah.
Um, you're going to have someone monitoring the people that are going into your beer garden, right? Because it's not going to fit all 3,000, I'm assuming.
Okay, yeah, so we're going to have, uh, when it looks to be kind of four, then we'll have security kind of slowed down.
So my motion will to be, will be to approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, two, one, four.
And move in second into approve application number two, three dash zero, zero, two, one, four. I also vote aye. Motion is carried. Application is approved.
Thank you for the community service aspect of this issue.
Yeah, this looks like a really good event, guys.
We're very fortunate that Lieutenant Dowd and Reed, Glenn and Jody are both going to come. You're a rock. They're going to be here to give motivational speeches to the players.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just hope we win the game. All right, moving on to preliminary hearings. Calling agenda item number five, application number two, two, dash, two, four, six, two, zero, from 7-Eleven Hawaii.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Mission members, Kenneth will approve for the applicant. My right is Blake Jokotaki, Y O K O T A K E, Director of Human Resources. We have just one change to investigate. And that would be as to the subject line on first page as well as on page three. We do have a definite address now for the store. And it is nine, one, five, four, eight, zero, copulate Parkway Building One. And we have communicated that information to the legal commission staff so they can put it in the
Thank you. Brand new.
Brand new.
Right. Okay. Commissioners, any questions or type of action?
Will be to approve application number two, two dash two, four, six, two, zero. Second.
And move then second into approval application number two, two dash two, four, six, two, zero. I also vote I motion is carried, application is approved. Moving into temporary license applications, calling agenda item number six, application number two, two dash two, five, zero, one, two from C I A B L L C D B A Old Town Pizzeria and Tap House. Hi, good afternoon.
I'm Capo with Chicken and Barrel, C I B, at Hotel, you know, Pizzeria Tap House.
Yeah, this is at the Ono Locos Tacos, right?
So we're just, they are looking to reinstate the places that they had. And then we have a application for a permanent license to expand this.
Any experience, Mr. Lo, in, in restaurant management or beverage management?
Chicken and Barrel is open for two years. So we've been running that for that time. Prior to that, we had a cafe, but it was just for, we've been doing this for two years.
Okay. And so this is, you folks planning on hiring any staff with experience?
Yes, I brought my, my general manager for the pizzeria, Taylor. She has a, she's done a lot of that. That's my son.
It's a big responsibility. So I take it very seriously. Okay. Commissioners, any questions or type of action?
Will be to approve application number two, two dash two, five, zero, one, two. Second.
And move then second into approve the application. I also vote I motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you. Good luck. Proceed back soon. Coming agenda item number seven, application number two, two dash two, five, zero, two, eight from K Express Inc., D B A Par Three Liquors. Ms. Wu.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Can't hear you, Miss Wu. I don't know if you need to turn on your audio.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you a little better, maybe. I think you're gonna turn, enable your speaker on your computer.
Okay.
No, no.
So can you hear me better?
Yes, wonderful. That's much better.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Min Young Woo on behalf of K Express Inc. There is no changes necessary for the investigative report.
Will be to approve application number two, two dash two, five, zero, two, eight. Second.
And move then second into approve application number two, two dash two, five, zero, two, eight. I also vote I motion is carried, application is approved. Thank you, Ms. Wu.
Thank you.
Moving on to requests, calling agenda item number eight, request number two, three dash zero, zero, two, one, five from Murphy's Bar and Grill. Mr. Murphy, nice to see you.
Good to see you guys. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mr. Ryan, Mr. Dorsey sends his regards.
We've got a fiftieth reunion.
Yeah, see, we told you to ask if you're gonna go.
Fifty. Falsely identified her. All right, so this is for the pigskin pickup, right?
Correct.
All right. How many folks think are gonna be attending this year?
Probably about two hundred, two, two hundred and twenty five.
Have questions, but before I forget, thank you for your committee service.
Oh, thank you.
Yes. Happy these events are coming back.
Yeah. Oh.
And this is into the Merchant Street area and then
Correct.
your guys indoor area, correct?
Right.
Motion will be to approve our request number two, three dash zero, zero, two, one, five. Second.
And move then second into approve the request. I also vote I motion is carried, our request is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So are you gonna go?
All right, calling agenda item number nine, request number two, three dash zero, zero, two, four, two from Semi Sub Inc., D B A Semi Sub One. Good afternoon.
Chris Arinas, C H R I S E R I N A S, representing Semi Sub. Oh, I'm sorry, Semi Sub Inc.
This is for a tour cruise vessel general license, correct? I don't have any information here about your vessel.
Now, this is, they need permission to late renew.
Oh, late renewal.
Yeah.
So it's the biggest question we normally ask with late renewals like this. So states in there, we can, for good cause. So what is the good cause of why you're late?
So after we have shut down, is it a C word? We had to, our primary thing is to a boat company and whatnot. So after being shut down and not operating for about four months, we had to make sure that's the boat still were in working condition or else we're just gonna be a forty bar, which is not our intent at all. And we had to do a restructure on all the staff and crew because a lot of them had left the island. So we have to get everything lined up still. And then the owner decided to hire me and put this on me a week before expiration. So I've been hitting the gym to carry all the weight. We'll try.
So the new hires that you guys have, you've got to then through and working through to get through the liquor commission training and things like that?
Yes, sir. We are, we, so far we got three yellow cards and we've got also three blue cards to cover all the shifts that we've been.
My motion will be to approve request number two, 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 three dash zero, zero, two, four, two. Second.
And move then second into approve the request. I also vote I motion is carried, your request is approved and granted. Thank you and good luck.
For your time.
Thing agenda item number ten, request number two, three dash zero, zero, two, six, four from P L C dash K V H Management Company, D B A Comma Ina Beach Hotel.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. It's nice to see you in person.
Nice to see you, Tom and Solira.
It's been a while. Here with me in person is the bar manager for the applicant, Jen Akrell. Her last name is spelled A C K R I L L and online, I believe, is Ha Ah Heil Zablon, the G M of the hotel. There we go. There he is. And his name is spelled accurately on the screen.
Thank you.
So I'm, I know you guys have received our material, so I don't necessarily want to repeat anything, but I think our main, you know, goal here is to receive a permanent or longer time waiver so that we don't have to come back each year. Like we've got a really good track record. We've had this waiver since twenty twenty one. The customers seem to love it. The staff really do feel a lot more comfortable and safe with these procedures in place. And we're happy, meet Jen, Ha Ah Heil, we're happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
I think, Ms. O'Hara, why we do it by year is because, you know, restaurants can change menus, you know, and so we don't want these to be considered a blanket approval. It's an approval for these specific drinks. So if you guys change your menu, you know, things like that, or even change the recipe, that's a change that would need to be approved by the commission. So that's why we usually do a one year timeframe with these.
The waiver we have currently, and we would be happy for it to be a condition of this waiver, is if there is a change in any of the recipes and menu items, we would submit that to the commission.
It's a lot of cocktails. Yes. Um, is there anything on your menu that isn't pre-batched?
Oh, there are two. The menu is attached, so you can see the menu. So cocktail recipes are just the recipe. The batches are only those first few pages for the batches. The exhibit B is just to give you a sampling.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. We don't want you to think we're batching up the whole bar.
It's a pretty extensive menu.
Yeah, I can see that. So it does allow us to stay modern with the culture and our guests' expectations while being able to service them in a timely fashion.
So here, refresh my memory, will you approve this for one year previously?
Yeah, twice. And this is the question I ask every applicant. Are your bartenders trained to make these drinks from scratch if the customer does not want a pre-batch?
A hundred percent.
Yeah, a hundred percent. Train, if I ask for one of these drinks and I say, I don't want it pre-bashed, I want it made in front of me, they all can do it?
They all can do it, yeah. So they're trained initially to do it independently. And then we train them again to do it in the batch section.
Okay.
And it's also, there's a mathematical way that I train them to understand how the recipes are done. So if they can look at the ounces on the batch bottle and know what the ounces are independently.
Okay. And the other question we always ask is about how the contents of the batching gets disposed of. Like I said, this is a lot of drinks. This is a lot of blended. Juice, you have all kinds of liquor in here as well. How do you know when to toss it out and start a batch?
Absolutely. So we, the alcoholic batches are only alcohol products. So it would be similar to it being inside of the bottle, just in a larger container. Once the batch is completed, because there is not really an expiration date on the alcoholic batches, then the device is cleaned, sanitized, and then dried and then reused. The batches that have the rosé and the
Yeah, so there's actually only two items that are mixed with non liquor products and those are disposed of per T T guideline at the end of twenty four hour period. Or, you know, more likely because at the end of the day, when the machine is, you know, running low, like anybody who's serving frozen, frozen drinks, they, which should technically all have the same waiver. That's just disposed of because you're not gonna re-serve that the next day. We feel, and just as a general matter, we feel like that would be okay for the customers.
Yes, let's have an eye on sanitation and health fees when we're doing these batches and when you folks are
A hundred percent.
you know, considering whether to save something for the next day.
It's not always worth it, because there is, yeah, yeah. The stewardess is not our way.
As a consumer, I would like fresh ingredients. Thank you.
Yeah.
And I tell my client, if you're thinking about it, the answer is no, you're not keeping it.
Thank you. Okay.
So one more comment. I'm not comfortable with permanent waivers. It makes the rules meaningless. Would you folks be okay with a two year extension or two year?
Yes, as much time as you guys are comfortable with, we would be happy to, to take that. I think just the one year, I was feeling like my reminder was always going off to prep their application, which I'm happy to do, of course, and visit with you.
And as a reminder, in that two years, if the menu changes, if something gets taken off the menu, something added, if a recipe changes, any change to this needs to be, needs to be approved by the commission.
So my request, my motion will be to approve request number two, three dash zero, zero, two, six, four with a two year renewal with the same verbiage that if anything does change, please let the commission know.
Just to clarify, a two year period.
Period, yeah, sorry. Thank you. Second.
And move then second into approve the requests for a two year timeframe. I also vote I, the request is granted. Thank you, ladies.
One last comment. It's not a renewal. The request ends. There's no automatic renewal. You would have to come back if you want to continue.
Similar to what we've been doing with that.
Yeah.
But to make sure this is all, this is understand.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right, let's see. Moving on to agenda item number eleven, request number two, three dash zero, zero, two, seven, eight from nine, three, nine Entertainment, D B A Club nine, three, nine. Ms. Obsiana.
Could you please, Members of the Commission, be of scene on behalf of the licensees? To my right is Stuart Chirac, the owner of nine, three, nine.
Are requesting some waivers?
That's correct. Consistent with some of the issues that we discussed the last time Mr. Chirac and I were here with respect to the adjudications, we are requesting the first waiver to allow nine, three, nine to keep duplicate copies of each employee's cards on the premises at all times. This again is a redundancy that we have in place in case any of the dancers or other employees should happen to forget their cards at home, otherwise not have it on their person. We do expect to keep these cards in a place that will be unlocked and available for inspection should an investigator stop by at any time.
The location will be in the DJ booth.
That's correct.
I guess I have a question with this waiver request. Do you know of any other establishment that has similar waiver requests or waiver that's out there?
Honestly, I don't. I'm not aware of any. I do know, however, that, you know, for this particular type of license, my client has a unique number of employees that are registered. I believe there are a total of about a hundred and fifty registered. And I believe at any given time, there are approximately fifty employees on the premises during any given business hour. That significantly, I believe, more than a lot of licensees in that same category or class. You know, this again is just to ensure that, one, that everybody's properly registered and, two, that we have all the documentation ready for inspection if an investigator should stop by.
Second one, but Mr. Chirac, so thank you for coming in. It shows you, you're demonstrating commitment to compliance with the rules. That is important to us. So my comment, I'm not comfortable with number two request. Why don't you persuade me why this is something we should wait?
I do understand that. And again, this is also consistent with our attempts to make sure that all the registration requirements are met and all the paperwork requirements are met. However, there are the occasions where the club will have visiting dancers who come in from either out of the state or out of the country and either don't have the necessary documents to be registered with the commission or don't bring with them all of the paperwork such as their original social security card that is needed in order to register and obtain a card. I understand the hesitation, the, the representation and the commitment that Mr. Chirac who can make to the commission is that all of the other requirements for dancers, their age requirements, their legal ability to work in this country. all of the other requirements for dancers, their age requirements, their legal ability to work in this country, all of those would be adhered to. The only request that we have is that the process of obtaining a card again requires documentation that not a lot of people travel with, um, and many of these dancers travel full-time for their jobs. And it takes, um, a few days for them to obtain the cards, so usually they only do fly in for just that limited engagement. And they're dancing for maybe a few days at a time and not more than, you know, a couple of times a year. So our expectation is that very few people will fit under this particular waiver. Um, and it's mostly, one, to, again, ensure compliance, and two, um, to allow him to be competitive in his field. Um, there are a lot of other clubs in, in this, um, particular jurisdiction that don't have liquor licenses and are not subject to these kinds of requirements. And so, um, insisting, his insistence on compliance with all of these rules does put him at somewhat of a disadvantage, um, and does sort of exclude a certain sector of his business to him. Um, we do understand the commission would have some trepidation on this request. Um, we're happy to put any additional conditions that might make the commission more comfortable with it. Um, we're happy to submit a case-by-case basis request to apply the waiver. Um, and again, you know, I did try to narrow it as much as I could to, I believe we put five days for every, you know, three-month or six-month period. We're happy to extend that or narrow that as the commission seems fit. But I do think that, you know, the particular realities of his, of his business require some type of waiver for traveling dancers, otherwise, uh, that would be a business that would be closed to him.
The waiver to me seems to invite a dancer to come in to Hawaii, dance for one or two nights and leave without registering. Any comments on that?
Um, you know, that is something that does happen, uh, but I believe that limiting the waiver to a certain number of days in a, in a span of time, whether it's six months or a year, I think does prevent dancers, for example, flying in once a month, right, and dancing for a couple of nights without being registered and flying back. That would not be allowed under this, this waiver and under the, the limits that we've requested to set. Um, if the commission has additional, again, restrictions that it would like to see for, you know, a case-by-case basis approval, that we submit information for each dancer, uh, prior to their arrival to the state, we're happy to do that. Um, so that the commission can take a look at each instance, and if, for example, you see the same dancer over and over, feel free to deny the request for waiver for that particular dancer.
Ms. Ms. Obsiana, I'm not comfortable, I am not even to the point I could come up with something that would, um, make me feel comfortable in terms of restrictions. Um, I, I can't even think of anything.
I'll, I'll chime in here, Commissioner Misha. Um, I'm not comfortable with these either. These rules were put in place to prohibit, um, abuse, um, to prohibit sex trafficking, to prohibit, prohibit human trafficking. The registration is required of the dancers so that we know who they are, what they look like, what their name is, and that they are of age to be dancing and that they're doing it of their own volition. They have to come down here, you know, or they have to be registered, they have to get a card sometimes. Um, and it's also, this would make it too onerous for our investigators. Um, a dancer could just say, oh, I'm just here for a couple of days, I, I have the waiver, you have the waiver. So now you're requiring our investigators to differentiate those registered employees and then those employees that are not registered, that are required to be registered, those registered, those that are not registered that aren't, it's just too much. They have a lot of work to do already, and, um, everyone that is employed as a dancer or a bartender or a DJ needs to be registered with the commission so that we can have a record of them. And I, I, I'm sorry that I do not support this request at this time.
I, I understand the, the hesitations and the issues with this particular request. We are happy to provide the commission for anyone that we do request a waiver for, to submit copies of their identification that does verify their legal presence in the country, does verify their age, um, and again, submit all of that paperwork and have it ready at the club, along with any time cards that document what times and what days that they are permitted to work.
If you're able to do that, why aren't you able to have, to be registered then? I don't understand. If you're able to provide all of this documentation, then you should be able to come and register that, you should be a registered employee.
I understand. Um, part of the issues with the traveling dancers is one, that they are required to bring with them a social security card. Some of them, one, if they're out of the country, don't have a social security card. And two, um, the ones that are from out of state, don't travel with their social security card. In fact, they're told by the social security agency specifically not to travel with their social security cards. Um, and again, the time that it takes to process the request, because as you said, the commission is very, very busy, all of the staff is incredibly busy. We don't want to overwhelm them with a request and say, hey, we need this dancer to have their card tomorrow. Um, I know that it takes several days for them to be processed, have all of their paperwork verified. Um, but again, you know, if the commission has additional restrictions, we're happy to, you know, implement any restrictions that you have to prevent abuse of the system. Um, but if the commission is absolutely not okay with the waiver, you know, we are happy to withdraw it if, um, it's not something that the commission wants to see. Again, we were trying to think of ways to ensure total universal compliance with all of the registration rules. Um, the trap, the dancers that are here temporarily, who travel internationally and throughout the country, were an issue that we talked about and tried to figure out a way to ensure that, you know, if they were in the club, that they were not in violation of commission rules.
I'll chime in then, I'm, I mean, I'm, I have my own concerns about both your request for one and two. My bigger things are obviously, number one, having a liquor license is a privilege. You guys are lucky to get that, to run this, but everybody that does have one, that do the same type of business as your client, need to follow the same rules. So I understand, we talked about it as part of the adjudication thing, but ultimately, they, that's what those rules are there for. The second one, my concern realistically is that even though you want to limit things, although I know you don't decide to make fifty of these dancers come, as you're saying, fifty at a time may work, so that could then be your entire dance force. There's nothing stopping you from that with any type of restrict, anything here, and same with, uh, Commissioner Misha. I mean, I don't have any way of making it more palatable for myself to see as a way to offer a waiver of a rule that was set there for a specific reason.
Well, to trust the, the first concern, I, I understand that, um, you know, completely acknowledge that there are things that are asked of every licensee, and we're happy to do that. Um, the reason that we asked for the first waiver was, um, there have been instances where a dancer is on stage and an investigator has come in and asked for her card. And obviously, she's not equipped at that moment to have her card on her, and it's been in her locker. Um, but that has resulted in violations of not having her card on her while she's on site. The reason that we did want to be able to keep all of the cards at the club is, again, to make sure that, you know, one, the dancer has their card, and two, that the club has a card in case it's, well, inaccessible to them somehow because they're dancing on stage, it's in a locked locker at that moment. The investigators obviously can't access it when they come for inspection. Um, and two, you know, in, again, the understandable instance that people forget things at home, they, they are properly registered, we just have to show the proof that they're properly registered. So again, keeping a duplicate copy at the club would ensure that no matter what happens, everyone in the club has their proof of registration onsite for the investigators to be able to see.
Um, I'm sorry, let me interrupt real quickly, for, for the first request regarding the cards, you asked, you're requesting for duplicate copies, correct? Not to be able to keep the only copy on your person, because that's my concern, is that those cards can be held hostage because you can't be registered at another, at another establishment if you're registered under one. So I wouldn't want, um, your, the, the employer to hold them hostage to the place because they have the cards.
Understood.
I'm sorry, you, they can be registered at one school.
I know, but it's, it's, um, we don't want the card to be kept by the employer. The point is that the employee should have access and control of the card. I understand, I used to be a waitress, I forgot my card in my other purse several times, but, you know, then I'm on prep. And I'm not serving alcohol, you know, and that's just how it goes sometimes. Um, or, hey, you gotta go home, switch with somebody else and do a shift tomorrow, you know, um. So I understand that, but, um, you know, as, as we've mentioned before, there's a reason why these rules are in place. I would be inclined to perhaps approve the first request if there were some assurances that if that person is no longer an employee with you, that card is returned to the commission within a very short timeframe, so that you're not able to hold on to those cards.
And that's not a problem, we have no problems with committing to, one, only keeping a duplicate copy so that each employee has their own card, and secondly, to turn them in within whatever specified time period the commission is comfortable with after they are no longer working at the club.
Sir, I have a question. Under the duplicate, is there a way the commission can stamp the duplicate copy? So we know it's a duplicate, that would be provided to.
I think the issue is, is that when an investigator is on premise, uh, on premise, the, the employee has to present, uh, the employee registration card, because it has to be on his or her person. My, my interpretation of the request is that, uh, the licensee would, would hold a duplicate that could then be presented to establish that requirement. As opposed to, um, I mean, because I, I don't think anything would prevent, uh, an employee from coming in and getting more than one card for the same premises. I mean, that, those are frequently issued if someone has lost one, for example. It's just, uh, whether or not the duplicate that is held by the, at the DJ booth, I think, could be tendered in satisfaction of the employee registration, and correct me if I'm.
That, that's correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
One of the fines that we received, just adjudicated two weeks ago, was for an employee who did not have her card at the moment that day when she was properly registered. So those are the types of things we want to avoid.
Make motion to approve request one. I think the temperature of the commission is, we're not inclined to approve request two, what's your pleasure?
No, I, I completely understand, um.
Do you want to withdraw request number two, or you wanted to rule on it?
Yeah, we're happy to withdraw request number two.
Okay. Let me make a motion that, um, motion to approve request, sorry, request number twenty-three-dash-zero-zero-seven-two-seven-eight with respect to the first waiver request. So into section three-dash-eighty-two-dash-thirty-eight-point-five subsection B of our rules with the following conditions, that, uh, the waiver is only for six months, and that to the extent an employee is discharged or dissociated from the licensee, the licensee is required to return the card to the former employee.
Sorry, can I just get clarification? Sometimes the dancers will leave the state, go to school, and then come back. Do we, if they leave, do we also return that card because they're going to be coming back?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that would be returned to the employee, correct, and not the commission?
The employee.
Okay.
And then make a follow-up, re, motion to approve the request to withdraw the second request for the same.
I've been moved and seconded to approve, uh, request number two-three-dash-zero-zero-two-seven-eight in part, um, in the first section of the request agenda is as number one. I also vote aye on that matter, motion is carried and that request is approved. I also vote aye on the motion that will, the motion to withdraw the second part of the request, agenda is as number two, and I also vote aye on that. And the second part of the request has been withdrawn.
So come back in six months and we'll see how it works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to other business, request number two-three-dash-zero-zero-two-zero-seven from Kenneth Hu Esquire on behalf of Eve Hospital, Vibe, Vibe Hotel Waikiki.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Hu.
Thank you.
Also hearing is Daniel, Saka Kibara, the C K E. K I B A R, he's the manager of the applicant. This is a request to weave a rule that requires a primary entrance to a, uh, license premises to be kept unlocked during all times that any person other than an on-duty employee is on the premises. So currently, the hotel front door is automatic. Um, you will, you go up to the door, you'll open it, and when you want to go, go out, they'll open to you go. But currently, from twelve midnight to five AM, the automatic feature to go in is disabled, and that's for security purposes. But they have, uh, hotel personnel monitor the front door at all times to make sure that there are any, uh, emergency people or other hotel guests, for whatever reason cannot get in, they will open the door for you. That's what this waiver request is, just to be able not, uh, keep the front door unlocked. If you can call it that, it's just that the, the flipping feature, automatic feature open will not be working at that time.
It's accessible only to guests that have a key card.
Yes.
Or employees that are on.
That, that's correct, and any other person who wants to come in, hotel personnel will open it for the emergency. Please, pardon.
And somebody is there during these hours in case an investigator comes.
Yes.
If we do this for one year, you want to come back, but it is.
I enjoy seeing.
It's the right answer, that's the right answer.
Like, the concern I have, Mr. Hu, is what I mentioned in a prior hearing, that once we get permanent waivers to rules, it sort of turns the rule on its head.
Sure.
I, I took a quick look, the hotel seems to be right across Coolio Beach, maybe at certain times of the night, not the most um, upstanding citizen, so I get it. But I want to make sure that we have an experience, maybe our investigators can come and make efforts to access the premises. And if we get favorable reports, we can reconsider something longer.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thanks. So my motion will be to, um, approve request number two-three-dash-zero-zero-two-zero-seven with a one-year time limit. A time period?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the request for a one-year timeframe. I also vote aye, motion is carried, uh, request is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hu. Uh, calling agenda item fifteen, request number two-three-dash-zero-zero-two-zero-zero from Kenneth Hu Esquire.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission Member, Kenneth Hu appearing for the applicant. To my right, Jean Suzuki, S U Z U K I, she is the principal of the applicant. This is a waiver of the rules to allow the filing of the, uh, temporary license after, even though it's more than five days after the last license was uh, canceled. Uh, this is the old Gobertay space, Gobertay space in the international market.
They just closed, yeah.
Yes, they just didn't renew June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay. And what kind of business you gonna do? Yes, John, what kind of? My agency. All right.
Yeah, my motion will be to approve request number two-three-dash-zero-zero-two-zero-zero. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the request. I also vote aye, motion is carried, uh, request is granted. Thank you, and good luck, I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item fourteen, request number two-three-dash-zero-zero-two-three-seven from Mr. Kevin Aoki, of the Aoki Group.
Hi, my name is Kevin Aoki, um, representing, um, Waikiki Eats LLC, requesting, uh, permission for late renewal.
And what's the reason for your lateness, Mr. Aoki?
Uh, there's a bit of a confusion, um, the Liquor Commission sent, uh, license to, um, to my, um, to the address in uh, in Henderson, Las Vegas, since it was, it's owned by the Tao Group. So they thought that I had done the liquor renewal, and I thought that they have done it. And um, the commission called me up and said it was um, sent by accident to our address in Henderson. Um, so we, we both thought that we did the renewal, and they, that we both thought that they did the renewal, and they thought, they thought that I did the renewal. So, um, because it, we got the license, but um, it wa- it was a mistake in oversight on the commissioner, the liquor commission, by sending it. So once they found out that it was a mistake, um, they called me up and uh, um, and that's where I'm at now, um, to, to renew it.
Our motion will be to approve request number two-three dash zero zero two three seven. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the request. I also vote aye, motion is carried, request is granted. Thank you, Mr. Aoki.
Thank you, commissioners.
Chair motion for the adoption of decision and order of agenda items numbers fifteen, twenty-three inclusive.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, uh, to approve the adoption of decision and order for agenda items fifteen, twenty-three inclusive. I also vote aye the adoption of decision and order are approved. Moving on to adjudications.
Good evening, Commissioners, Daniel Jacob, Deputy Corporation Counsel on behalf of the City and County of Honolulu.
All right, calling agenda item twenty-four, Cafe Gangnam Karaoke. Have anybody appearing for agenda item twenty-four? There is somebody online?
Oh, Commissioner there. Hi, my name is Jane Kim J, and I am representative of Cafe Gangnam Karaoke.
Mr. Jacob, can you read the charge, please?
Honored during the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to accurately report its revenues from gross liquor sales or to properly complete the gross liquor sales report in violation of rule three dash eighty-one dash seventeen point five six of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Jim, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Accept the plea.
Yes. Been moved and seconded to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-four. I also vote aye, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what's your recommendation?
This is a follow-up audit from the fiscal year eighteen audit that resulted in a notice of violation for failing to report accurate gross liquor sales. Rather than using a cash register to record individual sales, the licensee used a cash register at the end of the day to record seventy percent of gross sales of food and thirty to liquor sales. The licensee did not follow through with the investigators and auditors' recommendations. This is licensee's second violation. The recommended fine is seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Do you have any common explanation?
Um, actually, there's no explanation, because um, I'm the man, general manager, actually. I handle everything of the cash register. And we totally changed the way uh, to um, to make the um, register, so we're not doing I, every individual, um, individually, because other managers, other assistant manager, they actually, it was sort of my fault, because um, they didn't enough, like, um, trained um, with the cash register, so actually I deal with everything nowadays.
You're kind of breaking up, but if I heard you correctly, you, you personally are gonna be responsible to make sure this information is logged accurately. Is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, have we, Mr. Jacob, to your knowledge, have we received a uh, accurate gross liquor sales report for the previous, for, what, what would it be?
For fiscal year eighteen.
Since then, have we received anything accurate?
Uh, my notes don't reflect that. Um, I'm not sure if Kiko is online and may have ability to comment on that, but I do not have that information. I apologize.
Yeah, I guess what I'm asking a simplified way is, I'm asking if she's currently in compliance, or if we're gonna have the same issue again next year.
Um, I do notice that Ms. Reyes is on the phone. I, I would defer to her if she would be available to answer that. I, I don't know.
Okay.
Um, actually, we're trying, because uh, after during COVID time, and then um, um, my boss, she don't actually, you know, keep the record out of receipts, so I actually took over everything, and then I start to manage with all the, other receipts with the makers, and then all the vendors, uh, receipts there. So actually, I'm keeping everything nowadays.
Um, Ms. Reyes, are you available online?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Kiko.
Hi.
Um, can you let us know if this, if this licensee is currently in compliance or on track to be in compliance?
Actually, the audit was before N five twenty, they're scheduled to be uh, audited again for pull-up audit for the one that just filed.
Okay. So we'll have to wait for the results of that.
We'll have to find this one out.
Yeah.
Okay, motion to approve the recommended fine of seven hundred and fifty dollars for agenda twenty-four.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the recommended fine of seven hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item twenty-four. I also vote aye, the fine is approved. And um, Ms. Kim, please work with Ms. Reyes and our, and our staff to make sure that you are, you are recording and reporting correctly, okay?
Yes, I will, of course. Thank you, thank you.
You.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item twenty-five, two thousand and twelve sports bar and cafe. Hello.
Uh, good afternoon, members of the commission, Neo Gotah, appearing on behalf of twenty-twelve sports bar and cafe. Appearing via Zoom with me should be Reina Takuban, a representative of the licensee. We waive reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the plea. Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-five. I also vote aye, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what's your recommendation?
This violation occurred on August sixth, twenty twenty-one, when the licensee failed to have a time card showing when its employees were on duty. This is a first-time violation. The recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Two hundred and fifty?
Yes.
Mr. Gotah, any comment?
This is a breakdown in following proper procedure by the staff. Uh, it was immediately rectified. Uh, they haven't had problems since. To our knowledge, investigators have stopped by subsequent and confirmed that time credits are proper.
Very good, thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item twenty-five.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars for agenda item twenty-five. I also vote aye, fine is approved. Thank you. Calling agenda item twenty-six, hot pot shabu ramen and barbecue house.
Uh, good afternoon, members of the commission, Neo Gotah, appearing on behalf of twenty-twelve sports bar and cafe. Appearing with me is Reina Takuban, representative of licensee. Uh, we waive reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the plea.
Twenty-six or twenty-seven?
Twenty-six. There's a motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-six. I also vote aye, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob?
This violation occurred on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, where the licensee made physical alterations without commission approval. The alterations included a removal of the wall, addition of a service entrance, addition of a counter, removal of a sink, and changing of a door swing. This is a first-time violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Gotah?
Uh, this is a transfer of a, a license to our client, and so this is a, a violation that the prior licensee incurred. Um, but because it's a transfer, we are responsible for it, and we're taking responsibility, but I have no explanation as to why the prior licensee did not seek commission approval for the renovation.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item six.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars. I also vote aye, motion is carried, the fine is approved. Thank you. Uh, calling agenda item twenty-seven, Club Mellow.
Good afternoon, members of the commission, Neo Gotah, appearing on behalf of Club Mellow. Appearing with me is Reina Takuban, a representative. We waive reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the plea. Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-seven. I also vote aye, the no contest plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob?
This violation occurred on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Licensee permitted entertainment which caused complaints from the public. This is a first-time violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Can you elaborate on the nature of the complaints, Mr. Jacob?
Sure. Uh, my understanding is there was complaints uh, made to the Liquor Commission about loudmouth music and deep pounding bass emanating from the licensed premises. Upon arrival to the premises, the investigators uh, heard the loud noises coming from the facility.
You, Mr. Gotah?
These violations occurred due to a door being left open. Um, since then, uh, clear instructions to our staff that the back door and doors remain closed. And to our knowledge, we have not had noise issues since then. In addition, staff is mo- carefully monitoring the noise levels of the music playing within the establishment.
This is in an area that seems to be surrounded by apartments and single houses.
Yeah, there are, I believe, some apartments behind the establishment, and so the back door being left open on these, this occasion caused those problems, and it's been recognized and remedied.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda twenty-seven.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the recommended fine for agenda item twenty-seven. I also vote aye, motion is carried, the fine is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gotah. Thank you, Ms. Takuban. Calling agenda item twenty-eight, Kohiyo Avenue Food Hall, Von Zai Burger, La Pina, Campino.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Michael Palmer, um, representing as an authorized agent, Kohiyo Avenue Food Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Mr. Jacob, can you read the charge, please?
Honor about July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensees sold liquor on the premises, which is prohibited upon the expiration of the license, and until that license is renewed and issued by the commission, which constituted a violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-one point four sub C of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Palmer, how would you like to plead?
Uh, no contest with an explanation, if I may.
Sure, we'll provide you that opportunity in a bit. Uh, motion to accept the plea. Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-eight. I also vote aye, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what is your recommendation?
Again, this violation occurred on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, where the licensee sold alcohol without a renewed license. Uh, this is a first-time violation. It's a recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Palmer, go ahead.
Yeah, so um, I believe it was a misunderstanding. We had, I had actually physically delivered the check for the renewal here on June thirtieth, which I believe the records show. Uh, however, it was missing the tax clearance, and I was sending about twenty emails to the mainland to try to track down that tax clearance, and I, I didn't have the ability to do it myself. So um, I was told by somebody here at the office that I was in compliance, and I didn't have to stop serving alcohol until um, because the tax, it was cleared, it just, there was nothing holding up the tax clearance, it was just getting that actual letter.
When did you actually get the license?
I believe it was the sixteenth or seventeenth of July. And I believe a week later, that letter made it to the Liquor Commission.
Um, how long have you been in business?
Uh, we've been in business since two thousand and seventeen.
My motion is gonna be to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda twenty-eight. However, the commission's gonna suspend collection of that as long as a similar violation does not occur in a one-year period. If a similar violation occurs, then you will not only be levied any new fine, but the five hundred dollar fine that's been um, withheld at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the fine with a one-year suspension, provided no, uh, no similar violations occurred in one, that one year. If it does occur, that fine will be collectable. I also vote aye on that motion, and it's carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Maybe come in a little earlier next year.
Yes.
Calling agenda item twenty-nine, Lani Kai Brewing.
Uh, Commissioners, I'm Steve Humchel with Lani Kai Brewing Company. To my right is Al Darling, also Lani Kai Brewing Company. We waive the right to um, hearing the charges and plead no contest.
Thank you. Motion to accept the plea. Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-nine. I also vote aye, the plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what is your recommendation?
This violation occurred on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, when the licensee failed to file an accurate gross liquor sales report. Uh, the licensee was selected for an audit due to its low sales cost ratio at one point eight eight. Uh, the Liquor Commission identified the following issues that contributed to that low ratio. Liquor sales generated from wholesale activities were not included, complimentary drinks value was under-reported, and the general excise tax assessed to the customers were not included. The audit review identified an upper reporting of the gross liquor sales of one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and change, which resulted in an additional license fee of eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-two cents, which was paid on June twentieth, twenty twenty-two. This is license.
Mr. Jacob, what was the discrepancy among?
Um, the liquor sales uh, generated from wholesale activities were not included. Complimentary drinks value was under-reported, and the general excise tax assessed to the customers was not included.
I thought you gave me a number in the, um, I heard a hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah, the, the audit review identified an under-reporting of the gross, gross liquor sales of a hundred and eleven thousand.
Thank you. Mister, oh, I'm sorry, what is your recommendation?
It's a first-time violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Humchad, um, comments?
Um, I'll have Mr. Darling speak.
Okay.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, thank you, Commissioners. Um, yes, uh, as the CFO, I take full responsibility for this. We we had utilized two different point-of-sale systems during this year, and there was a challenge in kind of the setup and formatting and reporting functionality of those. Um, and so during that time, I was using, you know, itemized sales transactions reports from the point-of-sale systems. You know, and then excluding the non-alcohol items like food and merchandise. Um, and then during the audit period, I was able to go, you know, get back into these point-of-sale systems and retrieve summary-level sales reports uh, that were requested by the auditor, and uh, and so we utilized the numbers from those reports. Um, yeah, this, uh, and, and, and then I was also able to find uh, reports of discounts. And so, for example, we have a, a VIP membership program whereby our VIP members prepay for a year of membership, and when they come into our establishment, uh, the first drink is free.
Prepaid.
Prepaid, well, essentially has been prepaid by the membership. And so, the discount reports I was able to find during the audit summarize these uh, much better than I had done with the, with the detailed reports I use. Additionally, that fiscal year was the first year we, we used a distributor. Uh, prior to that, we, we were self-distributing, and so I inadvertently uh, omitted inclusion, inclusion of the sales to the distributor. Uh, so, so those are primary contributing factors, and those have been rectified. I would also like to say, I, I worked very cooperatively with the auditor throughout, and um, she actually complimented me a couple of times for the timely delivery of thorough and well-designed spreadsheets and reports.
We are lucky to have Ms. Reyes.
I, I worked primarily with Stacy, but I'll tell you.
Are you, pretty good.
They're good, they're good. Um, so I, I'm fully confident this won't happen again, and yeah, it's, we have a much better understanding of our current point-of-sale system with all the reporting functionality.
Yeah, it's difficult to categorize everything, especially, you guys are doing so much. Okay.
Mr. Jacob, any comment or response to the explanation?
Uh, no, I, I have no comments.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-nine.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty-nine. I also vote aye, motion is carried, the fine is approved. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, calling agenda item thirty, Pizza Mamo.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Matthew Resich with Pizza Mamo.
Jacob, can you read the charge, please?
Honor about February fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee, a limited liability company, failed to notify the commission in writing of the name, age, and place of residence of the member or members who have withdrawn and/or the name, age, place of residence of the member or members who have been admitted. And or the name, age, place of residence of the member or members who have been admitted within thirty days from the date of such such admission or withdrawal. In violation of section two eight one dash forty one sub E of the Hawaii revised statutes.
The rest is, how would you like to plead?
I'd like to plead no contest with an explanation if I could.
Okay, let us um accept the plea and you can provide that later.
Second.
They moved in second and to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty. I also vote I. The plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what is your recommendation?
This is a first time violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Ressich.
Uh, thank you very much. I um, I would just like to say, yes, uh, we were late with completing the full packet. But um, at the time, in July of twenty twenty, uh, the commission had moved to receiving uh these type of nor- or. Notifications online, at least for a request for a temporary sidewalk permit. Um, so five months later and January nineteen or twenty twenty one. Um, we did submit the packet and we did it via email to the same um liquor dash licensing at Honolulu dot gov. Um, and then, you know, we were, it was a reply coming, um, stating that we were missing an item and that it would be best for. In the packet to be submitted um together. And I I admit that I missed that portion. I missed that entire email. Um, but in my mind and my experience, you know, when we had submitted previous applications, including for a different restaurant, Big Fire Tavern in Pama Key. When we submitted the application, I would receive deficiency reports via online for any missing item and then I would follow up. Um, and also just my understanding with how things were going during COVID, time did lapse between correspondence. Um, so I didn't think anything of it and I admit I missed the email. Um, but in my mind, I had notified the commission on January nineteenth within thirty days of the change. So I do apologize, um, and I just wanted to offer that explanation, but I admit, you know, um, the inked copy did not make it within three days.
I'm gonna move to um, motion for to to impose a fine of two hundred fifty dollars for agenda item thirty.
Okay.
Then move then seconded uh to impose a two hundred fifty dollar fine for agenda item thirty. I also vote I. Motion is carried. A two hundred fifty dollar fine will be imposed. Thank you, Mr. Ressich.
Thank you very much. Ciao.
Calling agenda item thirty one, Shabuya. Hi there.
Uh, my name is William Chang, W I L L I A M C H A G, uh, representing.
Mr. Jacob, can you read the two charges, please?
Charge one, honor about August twenty sixth, twenty twenty one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee failed to conspicuously post an exposed view convenient for inspections. It's licensed on the licensed premises. In violation of section two eight one dash seventy one of the Hawaii revised statutes. Charge two, honor about August twenty sixth, twenty twenty one, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee employed Kathy Laton in a section of the licensed premises where liquor is sold, served, or consumed. Without said employee being properly registered with the Liquor Commission in violation of rule three dash eighty two dash thirty eight point five. Sub B of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
The Che, how would you wish to plead the charge one?
Uh, no contest.
And how do you wish to plead a charge two?
Uh, no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest pleas for charges one and two of agenda thirty one.
Second.
They moved in seconded uh to accept the no contest pleas for both charges on agenda item thirty one. I also vote I. The pleas are accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what are your recommendations for each charge?
These are both first time violation. The the recommendation on charge one regarding the failure to post a license is five hundred dollars. The violation on charge two is a first time uh recommended fine is three hundred and fifty dollars.
Any comment or explanation on these?
Yeah, on the first charge, uh, we actually did renew the license. It actually got sent over to our Los Angeles office um on accident. It was during COVID and our, everything got mailed over there because we have shut down operations here.
So it was an forwarding address?
Yeah, and then it is, it is there. We we got it back and it's placed. The older one was placed, I guess, the one I ever checked will be opened. So that was, that's a mistake on our part. Our office has uh gotten all that figured out. On the second charge, Kathy, she had just been hired and she was making an appointment to come over here. I wasn't on the day to day over there, so from my general manager, she said that um she thought she had it and actually I have a picture. She got it the day after. But she was on schedule to get it. Um, and this was also during the COVID time. And I have a picture of it. It helps at all.
Then is gonna be to issue a letter of reprimand for charge two and approve the recommended sign of three hundred fifty dollars for charge number two of agenda item thirty one.
Are you gonna um tell her for charge one?
Sorry, I misspoke. Letter, the motion, a motion to issue a letter of reprimand for charge one. And recommended sign of three hundred fifty dollars of for charge two of agenda thirty one.
Second.
They moved in seconded to share a letter of reprimand for charge one and uh three hundred fifty dollar fine for charge two for agenda item. Item thirty one. I also vote I. Motion is carried. Thank you. Calling agenda item thirty two, Wang Chong.
There's. I'm Danny Chang. We're Wang Chong and I'm gonna wait for the uh. A reading of the charge and plead no contest.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. Motion to accept the plea.
Okay.
They moved in seconded to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty two. I also vote I. The plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what is your recommendation?
This violation occurred on August twenty first, twenty twenty one, when investigators witnessed customers not wearing masks and not social distancing. In violation of the mayor's order, this is a first time violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars. I will note that this did result in a twenty four hour shutdown of the licensed premise.
The Chang, any comment or explanation?
I actually think we keep our community. We we did our best to keep our community safe. We're very proactive in building barriers. We've actually even made PSAs, you know, little announcements about social distance. And so I think the biggest challenge at that time was, I was actually working that night. I was in the kitchen. And we seated our customers all separately, but in Hawaii, people are very social. So they went to hug each other and. Unfortunately, that happened and, you know, again, like, we were shut down. We felt really bad. Because we wanted to represent ourselves in a good light for the community. So we were a feature of the news for, you know, doing all these social distancing. Um, barriers for karaoke and all these different things, but, you know, unfortunately, that was what happened at that time.
Okay, thank you.
To take full responsibility.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda thirty two.
Second.
They moved in seconded to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item thirty two. I vote I, but with reservations. Uh, the motion is carried. Uh, the fine has been approved. Thank you for coming in. Uh, calling agenda item thirty three, Manichi Ramen.
Good evening, good evening, members of the the commission, Matthew Chung on behalf of the licensee. And I am authorized to speak on behalf of the members of the licensee.
What the charge read, Mr. Chung?
Oh, I'm sorry. Wave reading of the charge. I believe for the first case, we've already submitted. A plea form signed by the owner. And for the second charge, we wave reading of that charge.
We're just gonna take up the first one, agenda thirty three. Mr. Jacob, do you have a written plea?
I I believe the written plea is for the next case.
Okay, the first one, Mr. Chung has to do with um not timely submitting the name of every person employed on the premises.
Um, I'm sorry. Uh, I understand. They took the later case first, which is fine. Um, we enter a plea and no contest um to the charge.
Okay, we, you can explain later if you wish. Uh, motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
They moved in second and to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty three. I also vote I. The plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, your recommendation, please?
This violation occurred on November first, twenty twenty one, when the licensee failed to timely submit the name of every person employed. This is licensee's first violation. Uh, recommended fine is two hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. Chung, do you want to provide comments or explanation on this one?
Sure. Uh, real simply, the letter went to the owner. Who is at a different location than the business, when he sent the letter back to the business to. Conform to the letter's request to list for an updated list of the employees. By the time they got to it, it was just past November one. And when the accountant submitted it, I think it was November fifteen. So um, they will improve their. Reporting in the future.
Yeah, motion to prove the recommended final two hundred fifty dollars for agenda thirty three. Second.
They moved in seconded to approve the recommended fine for agenda item thirty three. I also vote I. Motion is carried. The fine is approved. Calling agenda item thirty four, Manichi Ramen. Mr. Chung, again, please.
Um, uh, good evening, members of the commission, Matthew Chung on behalf of the licensee. And I'm authorized to speak on behalf of the licensee. Oh, we wave reading of the charge and I believe we submitted a no contest plea form to Mr. Jacobs.
Jacob?
Yes, I can represent that. That is true. Um, generally, I think we would have allowed the. The no contest plea just to be submitted without the presence of the licensee, but as you know, we just had a case regarding the same licensee. So um, I asked them to show.
Okay, and um, the, did you provide a copy of the plea to administration?
I believe a copy was provided to the executive director. I'd be happy to um forward that along to you all. You know, I note that um, a plea of no contest can be entered on the record here as just as well.
Let me take a minute, please. I just want, uh, my, my, uh, my concern is that. Um, I just want to look at the file. Typically, uh, this type of violation would not be eligible for written plea disposition. But the first one, the time card one would be.
Okay, we'll of course take a minute. So we're gonna.
We take a little recess? Uh, thanks for giving me that opportunity. Um, I will confirm that with respect to LCV nineteen. Dash zero four four zero, there is a written plea of no contest that has been executed by. Um, William Robillard. As uh owner, and I'm trying to look at a date. This was uh June, June twenty eight of this year. Um, I I will say that typically we do not dispose of these matters by written pleas. Since Mister, since Mister Chung is online, if he, if he could just uh enter the plea of no contest.
Okay, why don't we do that, Mr. Chung? I think I heard you say, um, you plead no contest, but for the record, what is your um? Plea in response to this charge?
No problem. Uh, we enter a plea and no contest and I have authority.
And um, you wave reading of the charge as well?
Uh, I'm sorry. Yes, I wave reading of the charge.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chung. Motion to accept the no contest plea. Second.
They moved in seconded to accept the no contest plea for agenda item thirty four. I also vote I. The plea is accepted.
Mr. Jacob, what's your recommendation?
Uh, this is licensee's first violation. The recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Okay, and what was um the?
I apologize. This is failing to notify the commission in writing stating the name of any other information required regarding members who are admitted or withdrawn.
Is the five hundred dollar recommendation the same as the plea agreement?
I'm sorry.
The plea that you referred to, is it also contain a?
The plea of five hundred. The plea that, the written plea that I'm in possession of says that they enter um a plea of no contest and they will. Uh, accept the the fine as levied by the commission. There's no reference to a specific number.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chung.
Um, this is a curious case in that he. Um, unit purchase agreement was approved by the commission, I believe, in October two thousand twenty. And at the time of the hearing, um, before the commission. The question came up whether the unit purchase agreement, which had been signed on July twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Was in fact um a violation of the same rule that's presently before the commission. Because the agreement was dated July twelfth, but the hearing to approve the unit transfer. Was um initially set in September and eventually got to hearing in October. And at the time of the hearing, the commission asked me, um, along with Mr. Robillard, who was present. Oh, how do I respond to the fact that I'm now seeking approval? From the commission of the transfer between the parties, even though the agreement was dated July twelfth. And I pointed out to the commission that as a part of the unit purchase agreement. Said that it was contingent on commission approval. So our view was, and we explained it to the commission, that the purchase agreement wasn't effective until the commission approved it. In October, the commission accepted at that explanation and approved the transfer. Then a year after the transfer was approved, I got the notice of violation. Or the client got the notice of violation that was actually submitted. In October of two thousand nineteen, but then didn't get served to us until two thousand twenty one. And I have been through four deputies prior to Mr. Jacob to explain the same circumstance that I am planning, explaining now. And all of those deputies, including Mr. Jacob, says, it's not for me to decide. It's up to the commission. So, given those circumstances and given the cost and expense to go to hearing. We felt it was cheaper to bite the bullet, enter the plea and no contest. And pay the fine versus contesting it and, you know, setting another hearing and and taking up that kind of time. But that's essentially what the facts are. One of the issues that the commission had, or that the investigator had, was. The copy of the unit purchase agreement that's in the file was missing the page two that showed the contingency. We explained that to the commission in October of two thousand twenty. Um, uh, I think me, I may have shown them a copy of that page two. And the commission approved the unit purchase agreement, but like I said, even after that approval, a year later, we got served with this notice of violation. And that's the explanation.
Mr. Jacob, any response and in particular, um, with respect to the representation that. The sale was contingent on approval of the license by this commission?
I am unaware of any contingencies. I I am aware of the licensee submitting the papers without them having. Um, all the pages attached, the commission's approval and the rest of the story a year later. The determination that the transfer had occurred without notification. Um, I apologize. I, I don't have the agreement. Um, that page in front of me right now, so I I'll trust his representations.
There's any questions to the licensee or Mr. Chung? I don't have a specific recollection of your representations, Mr. Chung. I will accept those representations. And the motion is to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda thirty four.
Second.
They moved in seconded to issue a letter of reprimand for agenda item thirty four. I also vote I. A letter of reprimand will be issued. Thank you, Mr. Chung.
Uh, thank you, and I will submit that page two to Mr. Jacobs tomorrow.
Thank you.
Cause we've previously submitted to the other deputies, but it's not a problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Calling agenda item thirty five, TJ Sports Bar and Grill. Actually, before we move forward, we take a short recess for the bathroom. Please, I've been sitting a long time. For giving us that time for a short recess break. Um, I'll recall the matter, uh, calling agenda item thirty five, TJ Sports Bar and Grill. Good afternoon.
Good evening. Been a long day.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm Ken Hovanian, H O V A N I A N. I am the owner of TJ Sports Bar.
And um, our record should, um, you pleaded not guilty to this charge previously and we're here for a contested case.
I'm sorry.
We're here for a contested case here.
Correct.
Okay, and are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob, are you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Mr. Hovanian, um, I recall you went through this process previously for another matter.
Correct.
Okay, I'm gonna go through housekeeping roles. Well, before we do that, how many witnesses do you plan on calling? And Mr. Jacob, do you have any witnesses?
Catherine Fontaine.
So, Mr. Hovanian, for. So, Mr. Hovanian, for your benefit, again, both parties have the opportunity to make an opening statement with the city going first. City then has the opportunity to present evidence in support of its case, followed by you, the licensee. The other presentation, the commissioner has also have the opportunity to ask questions. Both parties will have the opportunity to cross-examine witnesses and also present rebuttal evidence with the city going first. Following presentation of our evidence, including rebuttal evidence. Both parties have the opportunity to make final arguments, but the city permitted a final argument and rebuttal. You understand the general procedural rules, Mr. Hovanian?
Yes, I do.
Thanks. So why don't we begin with opening statements? Go ahead, Mr. Jacob.
Thank you. Today's contested case hearing will demonstrate that on November twentieth, two thousand twenty, the licensee committed a violation of the mayor's order. For failing to to keep contact tracing logs and also allowing customers to intermingle and not wearing masks. Thank you.
Hovanian?
As far as the charges, I think the sequence of. How they were presented to us by the inspectors is important. In this situation, because it'll show a chain of events. The first one that they were, that they came in for was for overcapacity. Fifty percent. Can we go with that charge first? Explain the whole.
No, this is your chance to give an opening statement. It's basically a summary of what you think the evidence will show us.
Okay.
And you can, if you want to testify, I'm not sure if that's your inclination. You have that opportunity as well.
Okay. Yeah, so there are a number of charges here that. Were being brought up on. As far as the first one regarding. For the contact tracing, we do have contact tracing. The inspectors, when they came in, they stated that it was not in compliance because we did not have dates on there. Nowhere in the ever-changing orders did it require dates up until that time. And so, yes, we did have all the contact tracing cameras in place.
Okay, we're gonna move into the evidence phase, okay? So, Mr. Jacob, you can call your witness.
Um, prior to, I I'd like to ask that my exhibits be admitted into evidence. Uh, if the licensee does not have any objections, the evidence consists of two investigator reports. That were submitted timely to the licensee and uploaded to the liquor commission's drives.
In your exhibit one, Mr. Jacob.
Correct.
The report, and what is the other evidence or exhibit?
The everything is in exhibit one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Hovanian, do you have any objections to?
No, I believe I have all that.
Let me just make a record here. Do you have any objections to the commission receiving the prosecutor's exhibit one into evidence?
No objection.
The record to reflect that prosecution exhibit one is admitted into evidence. Any other housekeeping matters, Mr. Jacob?
No, thank you. I call Catherine Fontaine.
Thank you.
Where are you in? You swear to the testimony you give today's hearing to be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Fontaine, can you please state your name for the record?
Catherine Fontaine.
And where are you employed?
On the liquor commission.
And what is your job title?
Supervising investigator.
And what are some of your job duties as a supervising investigator?
Overall supervision of the enforcement section. I also do conduct inspections and write reports.
Were you involved in a compliance inspection of TJ's on November twentieth, two thousand twenty?
Yes.
Who are you with?
Brenda Mahia.
Can you tell us a little bit about how that that inspection began?
Brenda arrived first. I arrived later on to assist. When I arrived and entered, there was no one at the front taking any contact tracing. And. It looked like a full house. All the tables were occupied. There were groups of people intermingling with other groups of people. I saw a woman in a silver top, especially going from table to table. That's basically what I saw when I first walked in.
Can you tell us who Brenda is?
She's also a an investigator for the liquor commission. She's no longer here with us.
And was Brenda someone you supervised as a supervising investigator?
Yes.
Uh, did Brenda place her observations and conclusions in writing after her visit on November twentieth to TJ's?
Yes.
Or was that part of her job duties to reduce her observations and conclusions into writing?
Yes.
Did you happen to review that inspection that Brenda completed?
Yes.
Um, how come you reviewed the inspection report that Brenda completed?
The normal part of my duties.
As supervisor?
Yes.
Did you sign that report?
I did.
Uh, based on Brenda's reports, what observations did she make when she arrived?
When she arrived, she, the same thing, there was nobody at the front taking any contact tracing. She just walked in. Nobody asked her for her information. Groups of people intermingling, no masks. She saw a placard that stated that the. Occupancy level was supposed to be a hundred. And there were fifty-five people counted within.
Did you arrive later that night to TJ's?
I did.
And how come, did, how come you went to the facility at that time?
Brenda Mahia contacted me asking for assistance. Because she had found violations there.
And when you arrived, you saw people intermingling with no mask?
I did. After I walked in and saw what I mentioned earlier with the intermingling. And no contact tracing, I went to the bar and I was waiting for the bartender. And I turned and to my left, I saw a female who appeared to be an employee. Approach a male at a table and take down her mask. Down to her chin, and she continued to talk to him for a while very closely. And when the bartender came up, I asked if that female was an employee, and she said yes. And then we later identified her.
And is all of this information in a written report that you completed on the night of the of the investigation?
It is.
And did the licensee offer you any evidence of contact tracing?
No.
Did he offer you reservations?
Not me.
Are you aware whether he offered Brenda reservations?
No.
Okay, no further questions.
Mr. Hovanian, do you want to ask any questions of Ms. Fontaine?
Yeah. Actually, I do. So. When you came down, that was because the original investigator. Was having trouble with. Stating why she was shutting it down. When. When you told me, you remember beating me that night. The very first violation that you said that you were going to shut us down for was we were overcapacity, correct?
I don't recall.
Okay.
I don't recall if it was, if it was me or her.
I would just like to make a clarification. You're here for one violation. All of the activities that you're describing and that are described in the the report on the violation. Fall under a single violation, which is a violation of the COVID order. So you're referring to separate actions and reasonings for the violation as separate violations, and they're not separate. If you were found to have been in violation of any of the provisions in the emergency order, it constitutes a violation. So whether or not you were overcapacity or not, does not mean that you did not violate anything. Because there are many provisions under that same order.
Understood.
Okay, so just, I'm just trying to clarify, because you keep saying for this violation, for the first or second, there's only one violation.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I guess I should say this portion.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry. So for the portion of the violation that we were overcapacity. By fifty percent. I explained to the. Original investigating. Person that. They were incorrect. They were stating that because we had a sign up. And it is in the exhibit there. Guys have a picture of it. Exhibit F. You guys can see that.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Notice social distancing, six foot, maximum occupancy. Obviously, that's a, one of the many stickers that were. Being submitted around for COVID.
You have to ask her questions. You're not here to argue the case at this point.
My question is, do you believe that this sign? Because we put the sign up that we were in violation because of that sign. Is that the reason, right there, exhibit F? Tell the difference between.
Well.
A sign that was put up for COVID compared to a.
I've never seen a sign that was not posted by the fire department. So, no, I've never seen that type of.
Okay, so then that sign. In your opinion, should not be constituted as what the basis for fifty percent is off of. Okay, so.
I don't, I've never seen that type of sign before.
Okay.
I don't have an opinion on it. Either way, it's, it says max occupancy a hundred.
Then you said that no. And I can explain that one further to the commission. I want to keep on going down. Why? Said no contact tracing information was given to you at that time?
There was contact tracing information, I believe, from the previous month. That was provided.
Okay, that was the paper ones, and there's a picture of that. It's in that exhibit C. As far as the mayor's orders, another item that you were. Very adamant about with me was having dates on contact trace. I pointed out to you, we had a laminated sign in our window stating what the mayor's orders was. We, huge sign. Everything was highlighted. You continue to argue with me that we needed a date, and I told you, nowhere in there does it say that we need a date. I asked you, would you please read the sign and tell me what it says, and you told me, I don't have to read anything. We're shutting you down. I said, okay, at that point. Nothing I'd say will keep us open, and you said yes. Is that correct?
No.
Okay, then what is your recollection of that?
There was no arguing. And you were trying to make me go by something that was a sign that you had posted. And not the entire order, which is what we follow.
It was actually the entire order. You didn't even allow me to look at it, but. Sorry, I should, the the last item then that. Part of this. What else was there that? Was in violation under the same order?
The representative, you know, the opening statement by Mr. Jacob was that the licensee allowed patrons to mingle.
Uh, as far as the mingling. I have pictures, exhibits. I I don't see the mingling. The situation that she was referring to, I I cannot say yea or nay to that. The one employee that pulled down her mask, the customer had a very hard time hearing her. We all know, we dealt with this for two years. It's.
Okay, and you have to ask Ms. Fontaine questions. This is that point in the proceeding.
Okay. Ms. Fontaine, did the employee explain to you why she pulled the mask down?
No.
Mr. Jacob, any redirect?
No, thank you.
Missioners, any questions for the witness?
Uh, no question.
Your excuses, witness, thank you. Mr. Jacob, any other evidence or witnesses?
No, thank you.
Does the city rest?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Hovanian, you know, you said you do not have any witnesses. Um, I see that there's a an exhibit. Evidence exhibit? Do you want us to consider that in evidence?
All the evidence that I submitted?
Correct.
Yes, I'd like to explain that.
Okay, Mr. Jacob, any objection to the commission accepting defendant's exhibit?
I'll note that I do not believe I received this timely. However, I have a chance to look at it, and I have no objection.
Sir, Hovanian, I just, I'm not clear. Is it just one exhibit?
There is A through. I.
A through I. Strike that. The commission will. Will accept all of defendant's exhibit A through I in evidence. And how do you wish to proceed?
For the, I'm really sure what I need to do here. What, you want me to explain?
How do you want to proceed with your evidence? Did you want to testify? Ms. Righty.
Where are you in? Do you swear to the testimony you give today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
So in regards to the contact tracing. We have done everything. That we feel could have been done. The ever-changing order, we literally had to have somebody look at the order every day. There was no notices being put out. It was just changed. Everything was updated. We literally had to find Waldo every day. To see what new regulations there were. And I feel that we did a very good job with this, and this is also why we posted. These orders in the window. Have reservations, both digital reservations and paper ones. We went away from the paper ones because a lot of people were voicing concern for security of their information. So we went digital. All their, their information as far as their phone number, their name, that is all within the digital. So exhibit A shows some of that for that night. If you go to exhibit B, it shows the online. One that we had that people would scan a QR code. And then they would enter all their information on that. So you can see all the ones from, if you look in exhibit B, you'll see all the information that they were required to submit. So as far as us not having contact information, contact tracing information, when they had asked for it immediately. The staff at the bar does not have access to the digital files. That's upper management only for security reasons. For the customer. Sorry, exhibit C shows all the older paper ones that were in place at the very start of the order. And then we switched to digital. That was allowed. In regards to. The investor, investigator saying that nobody greeted them. investigator saying that nobody greeted them at the door, at that time, we did not have a doorman. We had to look at exhibit D. This is a list that was on every table. It was also in the front door before you walked in at eye level, right when you walked in. These are the things that were being required at that time by the orders. Exhibit E shows the sign that I was referencing. As far as a commercially available sign that businesses were putting up to let people know what the new capacity was. Our capacity is 233. Instead of putting 116 and a half, which looks kind of like a crazy number, I rounded it off to 100. The reality is with the social distancing requirements of six foot, you can see the you guys all, are they all on that same sign?
No, I can't see it.
But that is the actual placard from the 233. When I tried to explain this to the first investigator, she said it didn't matter what I told her. She has a picture, kept pointing to that one that says COVID distancing, so on and so forth. She says, you wrote 100, and you only get 50. That's kind of crazy. We have a 5,600 square foot bar. And then I tried to explain to her how they come across the 233.
What was the purpose of putting up that sign?
Which one?
Your sign that you put up, not the one that the fire department
Patrons, we felt that, again, it was such a confusing time, we wanted the patrons to know, okay, this is our capacity. It's 100, makes it pretty simple. It looked like a nice sign to put up at the time.
Sorry, was that, sorry to interrupt, but I'm trying to move on. So this picture of a drywall area. Exhibit E. Looks like part of your bar is
H.
Exhibit H, so it looks like you guys put up some sort of temporary wall.
Yeah, that's shelving that has
I'm not gonna go into whether this was approved by the commission or not. What is the purpose of that wall?
We were keeping all of the, it was temporarily blocking off that side, all of our takeout containers. They take up a lot of space, we have space in the kitchen.
Okay, so doesn't that change the available space for patrons in the area? So the 233, sorry, let me finish. 233 capacity is for your entire space, correct?
Correct.
And then you walled off a portion of your space, which technically then makes your space smaller, which would make your capacity smaller. So if I'm looking at this picture, I'm thinking the capacity was changed because you guys made this bar smaller. So the new capacity is 100. So I can understand the confusion.
Okay, but so 100
So they're looking at that maybe the smaller capacity of your premises because you put up a temporary wall, which limits the amount of square footage available to patrons. It is reasonable to think somebody would look at this wall, look at this sign, and think that 100 was the total capacity of the new square footage of this premises, not that it was 50% of the of the capacity of the premises, and then you were putting it up for COVID. I can understand why investigators would be very confused about this situation, sir.
So two things on that. Number one, as far as the fire marshal is concerned, the capacity does not change. That is not a full height wall. It's not a fire-rated wall that is simply shelving put in place. There is another door on the other side. If I wanted to, I could have patrons on the other side.
Well, that's arguable.
With the spacing, the six-foot spacing, the maximum amount of, and I have this if you guys want to follow along on that. I believe it is exhibit G. It shows our layout. With the six-foot spacing requirements, we can only physically get 71 seats in there. So we're still below it, the 100, well below it, just on this portion of the bar, not even including the other side that's behind the temporary wall. If you looked at, and I'm gonna jump all the way ahead, if you look at I, exhibit I, it is screenshots of all the people that were there at the time that the investigators were there. If you count that all up, there's 49 people in there. In reality, shouldn't even matter because our capacity is 100. By order of the mayor's orders, 50% capacity of your building.
Okay, let's move on. How about the masking and the social distancing and the mingling?
As far as the masking, when we asked the server, you know, why she pulled her mask
Not about why it's worth, did they have masks or not?
She had a mask. She had to pull down
On, properly over nose and mouth at all times as the order clearly states.
Yes, she had her mask down to communicate with the customer. The customer could not
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you. No more questions from you.
No. Well, yes. This, I understand why we had to go through all this and why the mayor did it. At the same time, I feel like this was a witch hunt. At the time that we got our citation, there was a number of other people that got citations. All of our businesses suffered severe economic loss. Tens of thousands of dollars for each one of them being shut down. No matter what I tried to explain to the investigators, they said, it doesn't matter. We're shutting you down. And they were finding anything and everything that they could. They went as far as asking for our time cards and went through the whole gamut of everything that they're allowed to do. But at that point, to me, knowing the times, it would have probably been a lot more beneficial, a lot more community-friendly to explain what was going on. We obviously were trying to do everything in the right. You saw the spacing. You saw all of our signage. Everything we did, we felt we were doing to the best of our ability. An occasional person like intermingling, like we all know, somebody's walking by the back and they say hi, obviously, local style, you can't stop somebody from saying hi as they walk. It feels their human right. So I'm not going to argue as far as, you know, did somebody pull their mask down? Yeah, they had their mask down. Endless to community. Because the customer didn't understand what they were
At this point, I'm gonna allow Mr. Jacob an opportunity to cross-examine you, Mr. Hovanyan.
I believe I only have one question. Thank you. Were you allowing only reservations that night or were walk-ins allowed?
No, at that time was reservations only.
Okay, no further questions.
Any other questions, Mr. Hovanyan?
No.
Okay. You have any other evidence? You do have an opportunity to
No, I
And for the record, do you rest your case?
I'm right.
We're going now to close an argument starting with Mr. Jacob.
Thank you, commissioners. The evidence today establishes that on November 20th, the licensee was allowing people to intermingle without their mask on. There was an admission as to an employee not wearing a mask made by the licensee tonight. And in regards to contact tracing logs, even the licensing's own exhibit B provides that customers had the option of entering in their contact information via online through our company website. What the licensee has failed to understand is that it wasn't on the customers to enter their contact information. It was the licensee's burden that the mayor's order required the licensee to collect that information, including full name, address, phone number of at least one adult. The evidence clearly shows that this was not being done. These, the failure to collect contact tracing logs and the failure to keep guests from intermingling and employees from properly wearing their mask constitute a violation of the mayor's order, and I believe the evidence has sufficed to show them that the violation occurred. Thank you.
Mr. Hovanyan, you can provide your closing argument, and for our benefit, you don't need to repeat anything you said earlier in the opening or in your testimony, but you can sum up your position.
Yeah. The mayor's orders changed constantly. It was a daily change, very confusing for a common layperson to understand. The extreme vagueness in there makes things very hard to follow. We suffered huge economic loss being shut down for 24 hours.
Anything else? Okay, Mr. Jacob, any final argument in the bottom?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. The commissioners will not deliberate.
Thank you for giving us the time to deliberate. Commissioners, we have any type of action?
Just sure my motion is going to be to find the allegation sustained second.
Then moved and seconded to find the allegation sustained. I also vote I, the motion has carried allegations, violation have been sustained.
Jacob, what is your recommendation?
Since licensee's first violation, the recommended fine is $500. I will note that it did result in a 24-hour shutdown of the licensee.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $500.
Okay. Then moved and seconded to approve the recommended fine of $500 for item 35. I also vote I, the motion has carried the fine will be levied. Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to other business, calling agenda item number 36. Liquor administrator, Ms. Hori, any administrative
No, I have nothing further other than what I circulated earlier in the weekly report. As I sit here counting up your parts, not even looking up.
Thank you as always for a thorough and entertaining weekly report. With that, we adjourn.